Things got quiet. I thought maybe it was time to start.
It might be quiet.
Too late.
They're listening.
They were already quiet.
The Chair will call the October 5, 2021, meeting in the City Council order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Folgenzie.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Present.
Alderman McMenamin.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donilon.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, a quorum is present.
Thank you. I think we do have a presentation by Baker Tilly to start the meeting with regards to the audit. If you'd like to come forward and state your name, we'd appreciate it.
Hello. Thank you for having me. My name is Joe Lightcap. I'm a partner with Baker Tilly. We're the independent auditors for the city of Springfield. Tonight I'll be going over at very high level the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ended February 28, 2021, as well as our audit results communication. I'll be going, as I mentioned, be going over at a high level. If you've seen the reports, you have any questions, feel free to stop me at any point to ask questions. First off, I'd like to thank the Office of Budget and Management for their help during the audit. We ask a lot of questions. We bug them quite a bit, and they're very good about getting us good answers in a very timely manner. I will start with the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which the name suggests is a comprehensive document. It's more comprehensive than what's required under accounting standards. It includes some additional transmittal language about the city and some historical 10-year trend information in the back of the report. It's very good to see how the city's done over the last 10 years. It's a higher level of transparency than is required, and the report is then submitted to GFOA to receive the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. The first part of the report I want to go to is page 1, the Independent Auditor's Report.
I'm not sure if we have that report.
We don't have it.
I'll talk in, hopefully in enough terms to give you the rundown of what I'm going over. So we issued a clean-
Sorry to interrupt, but just so it's on record, Director McCarthy needs to provide the report when the auditors come. Oh, it's here. There he is.
I sent it to everybody.
Okay. Via email or what?
Last week, I think.
Is it email?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think if the council members want to log in. You can log into your email. That'd be great. Sorry, Bill, I didn't know you were there. But I'd say it regardless. Go ahead. Sorry.
It's okay. So we issued a clean or unmodified opinion on the city's financial statements. It's the highest level of assurance you can gain from your outside auditors, and states that the information within is reasonable in all material respects and can be reasonably relied upon by an outside user of the financial statements. An emphasis of matter this year in the opinion on page 2 is that the city adopted GESB 83, which is a new accounting standard over asset retirement obligations. So if the city has a legal obligation, a legally enforceable obligation, to retire an asset and do it a certain way at the end of its life, you're required to record a liability now. So that's a new liability offset by a contra liability deferred outflow of resources during the year. The next section, the management's discussion and analysis, that's where I always direct my governing bodies to look at. It's a report written by management. It goes over the changes compared to the prior year, so the current year compared to the prior year, and it's written in a lot easier terms than the rest of the report, and it's just a good overview of what happened financially during the year. After that is Statements 1 and 2. These are the full accrual statements of the city. This has all of the funds, both governmental activities and business-type activities. It's all funds in two columns. It has capital assets, long-term liabilities, long-term debt, net pension liabilities. So it's pretty much all the accounts and funds of the city on a long-term basis. Statement 2 shows net position decreasing across the city by about $31.3 million. Governmental activity is increased by $30.7 million, mainly due to the spending of funds on capital improvements and capital projects and the spend down or the repayment of long-term debt. Business-type activities decreased by about $61.9 million. This was mainly due to the decommissioning, the plant decommissioning that happened during the year. Statements 3 and 5, these are more of what you would be used to seeing on a monthly basis or periodic basis. This is the more short-term perspective of the city's governmental funds. This is broken down by major funds and a combination column for non-major funds. Statement 5 shows an overall decrease in fund balance of about $5.1 million. The general fund increased $5.8 million. The motor fuel tax fund, another major fund, decreased by about $3.8 million. This was mainly due to spending on projects where the reimbursement will occur later on. It's not a short-term receipt of revenue, so it's not recorded in this fund, but the expenditures were funded. So it'd be more than reimbursed in fiscal year '22. The non-major funds had a decrease in fund balance of about $7.2 million, and this was related to the spend down of fund balance on capital improvements and capital equipment. Statement 6, so I mentioned a couple of numbers. I mentioned the net position for governmental activities increasing by about $31.3 million, or, sorry, $30.7 million, and fund balance going down by about $5.1 million. So a very large gap between the first statements, which are long-term full accrual, and the second statements that are more of a short-term basis. Statement 6 gives you kind of the reasons why. So when you spend on capital improvements, that helps your net position. When you spend on long-term debt, that also helps. But then your net pension liabilities and OPEC liabilities, if they increase, that'll decrease your net position. So Statement 6 kind of gives you that roadmap between the two bases of accounting. Statements 7 through 9 show a breakdown of the business-type activities by fund. So the electric fund, the water fund, and the non-major funds, Oak Ridge Sewer and Motor Vehicle. Those statements are on the same basis of accounting as the front schedules. Business-type activities are all on a full accrual, long-term perspective. Understanding that maybe not everyone saw the report before now, is there any questions or anything that I said or anything that you've seen that you would like to go over? Otherwise, I'll go to the next report. Okay. So the other report is our reporting and insights from the 2021 audit. This is the non-financial highlights of our audit. This letter is designed to satisfy a few different auditing standards. It discusses our responsibilities, management's responsibilities, if there were any significant changes to our audit plan, where are some key areas of focus for our audit in those matters. A lot of that is pretty standard information and doesn't change too much year over year. There is a section for internal control-related matters. When we come in to do the city's audit, we look at internal controls to help determine the nature, timing, and extent of our audit procedures, not necessarily to provide an opinion on internal controls to the city. But if there are things that we find that we feel should the council should be aware of, we put those in this letter. This year, there were two comments, the results of audit adjustments that were determined during the year. The city has put in procedures to help mitigate this going forward, and were very quick to help us through rectifying these adjustments. So while these comments, we haven't had comments in the past for the city, I think that is a testament to the diligence of the Office and Management Budget, and it's pretty rare amongst your peers to not have any comments. The final part is the two-way communications regarding your audit. It's a bunch of different things that questions to pique your interest. If there's any, ever any questions or concerns that you have over the city's finances or our audit, we're happy to answer those at any time. And page 2 of this report has my email and phone number. If there's ever any questions, feel free to reach out to me at any time. With that, I'll once again open it up to questions.
Any questions or comments? Alderwoman Conley, then Alderman Redpath.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for coming in. I did find the email, this is the one with like 14 or 15 attachments, is that right? Yeah, no, I have it. I'm just, I guess what I was, I wanted to ask, did you break the 100 and some odd of the page report up into multiple attachments?
No, no, they're different. They're each different reports. The one you want-
If you could come up to the microphone.
Right, no, I understand. So I guess I understood there's the one large one that is the comprehensive report, and that's, that's good to know. Were there any other findings in these other attached reports that we need to be looking at? I mean, I did kind of, I looked through things. I didn't, I did not read all of them yet. I'll be fully honest. It's a lot. But, you know, you go over the pension funds, you look at the electric fund, water funds. There were no major issues in any of those that you found in terms of auditing?
Correct. Correct. There were, there were no, except for the two adjustments I mentioned, there were no other large adjustments identified by the auditors. And just a quick point of clarification, we do look at the net pension liability in the actuary reports, but you have other auditors that audit the police and firefighters' pension.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Redpath.
You know, I appreciate the fact that our finance area decided to put this on, give it to us on an email, but it's hard to follow a report like this when you don't have it in front of you. And most of us, even if we briefly looked at it, we need to hear. I mean, this is, this is, you know, this is ridiculous. We should not have to sit here and listen to a guy tell us the stuff and go, "Oh, on page 7, this, and then on page 10, this." We have no idea. We're sitting here listening to something we don't have any idea. This is a, this is a very important report, and I encourage you, Mayor, in the future to have your director be more prepared and make sure that we either have a presentation up on the screen or we have a report sitting on our desk. Thank you.
I agree. Alderwoman Conley.
Sorry, just one more question, obviously because people in the audience couldn't follow along without something on the screen. Where is this going to be posted on our website?
Director McCarthy can answer that.
I believe it's already posted. If it's not, it will be in the Open Government section, just off the first page. Look for Open Government. All of our transparency reports are there.
What are they posted on?
And the report you want to focus on is the big one. That's the CAFR, but those are all a bunch of different individual reports. And we had reference in the email that we would be going over some of those reports. We didn't print them because the one CAFR alone is 257 pages.
So I'm sorry, Director, and I, just indulge me. The Open Government is under which tab?
Julia here, she can, I think at the top, there's like Government Services, and then there's a drop-down menu, and it says Open Government or something like that. I'm terribly familiar with the website to be able to reference it off the top of my head, but I know if you go to Springfield dot IL dot US.
Which is where I am.
At the top, there's some options, and then there's like, I think, a drop-down or something that says Open Government. Treasurer Buescher might be able to tell you.
Director, I'm on the website for you. Since you don't have a computer in front of you, yes, go to the Open Government tab and scroll down about a quarter of the way down, and you'll see the words Comprehensive Annual Financial Reports, and it has been uploaded, Director.
Thank you.
I just, I guess, okay, I'm just saying, it's not easy to find on a mobile device, which is how a lot of people access things too. I'm not seeing Open Government, but I'll keep looking. That's fine. I just, this is, it is important, and we do appreciate the audit, and I think Alderman Redpath made it quite clear that it's important that the residents of Springfield can access this easily too. So.
Yep, it's there for everybody to see.
All right.
Yeah, just to clarify, I don't know if you're on your handheld device, if on the tab across the top, the second one in says Residence. You click on Residence, and then the, it should pop up under there as Quick Links, and one of those Quick Links is to Open Government.
Thank you, Mayor, very much. That's what I was missing.
I'm tech-challenged. I like it right there in my face. But I don't have to drill down too much.
Thank you for the report.
But I didn't know if the presentation you gave was any different from, if you could synthesize that and email it to Director McCarthy, and then we can circulate it with the council members and post it. That'd be great. Alderman Redpath.
A follow-up question. Are you, are you guys the ones that do the audits on the bars and restaurants for gaming?
We do not.
Who does that? Is that under Todd Oliver?
You got, Director McCarthy will answer it.
OB M has been doing that, but I'm not sure who the-
I do it.
So where are we at on those?
Let's see, what are we in? We usually do them in January or February after the renewals come in. We didn't do them last year because of the pandemic.
So are we, we have those underway right now?
We did, well, we do a 30-year, and again, we didn't do one last year. The prior year, we did a third randomly chosen of the ones who were not grandfathered, and all of them were in compliance.
Because I know all of us are getting complaints about businesses not complying with what our rules are. So we need to, we need to turn that up, or we need to increase our audits.
What I would encourage any of you to do, if you get a complaint about a specific entity, let me know, and I can do an audit immediately. Won't be a problem. Happy to do that.
To that note, you know, you've mentioned that you're, and we've had many conversations about this very topic in this chamber, you've mentioned that a third a year are going to be done. So if we do turn one in, they will immediately get audited? We don't have to wait for the one third?
No, I can do it tomorrow, if you give me a name. Yeah. I just have to pull the data. All I have to do is pull the data from the Illinois Gaming site on what their sales have been, and then I have to go into Department of Revenue and look at their actual sales, total sales, from a sales tax standpoint, because gaming's not, and then I compare the two, and I get the percentage that way.
And that's really good to know. I appreciate that because I don't, unless, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I did not know that. I don't know if any of us knew that because when we bring it up before in this chamber, we were told, "Well, it's not the time of the year to do the audit. We're going to do the audit." And then you were, you good enough last time when we asked the question, you provided us the most recent data and it showed who was audited, and, you know, that was, that was a very good report. But this is the first I've heard of that, so thank you.
Yeah, yeah. If you've got a specific name, I can do it in a day.
Well, we all, at least, I assume everybody else gets those complaints, so they'll absolutely be passed along to you.
Happy to do it. No problem. Won't be a problem at all.
Any other questions or comments? Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your report.
At this time, I want to do a brief introduction. We have some individuals from the Office of Planning and Economic Development Department with us, and with the previous discussions, I thought it'd be good to put a name with the face, so they'd come forward real quick and introduce themselves, and a little bit what their tasks or what they're working on. That'd be great.
Come on up.
First is Ravi Doshi, and if they'd all file in, so we can keep it moving. There we go.
Hi, my name is Ravi Doshi. I think I'm too tall for this mic, but I'd first like to thank you, Mayor, and all the council members here in attendance for having us here on behalf of myself and the OPEC team. My name is Ravi Doshi. I am the Economic Development Officer for the Office of Planning and Economic Development. My principal duties include the administration and management of TIP projects throughout the city, as well as the coordination of economic development projects within the city. But our focus here is one of collaboration, inter-agency as well as intra-agency, and that is to expedite as well as provide accurate information on individuals who inquire or have inquiries related to rehabilitation, planning, development. We want to take a more proactive approach, you know, so we've drastically changed the way that we initiate our outreach, which is having more boots to the ground, as well as any inquiries that we do get into our office. We're not only looking into the program or the complaint that they are prescribing or they are advocating for, but also proactively looking into programs that they may be able to qualify for. So we are tracking all of that data as well. Messwin, who does our GIS analysis, also tracks all that data for us. I've been working intimately. Also, one of my duties is to integrate all the various aspects that come into our department on one platform. So if you've had a chance to see our website, that has also been changed to list programs and incentives, you know, that we are offering listed by ward, listed by various demographic information. Also, our office just recently completed an 897 parcel mailer, which is actually one of the largest that we've ever done in the last 13 years in regards to the SHA expansion, which you'll be hearing more about. We'll have our public meeting for that on October 18, as well as our public hearing on October 25 for that expansion. So we look very forward to that. I'd like to thank our receptionist, Elizabeth Jones, for helping us with that. It was an extensive mailer, as well as Donna Devlantis, who isn't here with us, you know, who is our grants coordinator for acquiring and writing the various grants to be administered by our office, you know. So those are some of my duties that I have. I also sit as the city's liaison on the Economic and Committee, I'm sorry, the Economic and Community Development Commission. So I sit on that. We will have our first meeting this month for that as well. So, just some of our duties.
And then Messwin, he's changed duties. He's over the enterprise zone areas and other items. So Messwin, if you'd reintroduce yourself, that'd be great.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Messwin Lent, and I'm the GIS Geographic Information System Analyst and as well as Business Projects Manager. No worries if you don't get my first name. It might seem abnormal, considering I'm originally from East Africa, Ethiopia. Just a little bit about me. I studied economics and political science at Illinois College in Jacksonville, Illinois. I worked at Governance Office of Management and Budget for 14 months and decided to get my graduate degree at UIS in Public Administration, and I completed a DCEO internship there as well. I met some of you in person. I haven't had the opportunity to meet everyone and show my face here at the City Council. I've been working at OPEC for about two years now, and I'm grateful and passionate about what I do for the city of Springfield. I specifically administer the Enterprise Zone Program, Cannabis Grant Program, TIP exterior rehab, staff liaison for Historic Sites Commission, and provide maps and demographics and business-related data for grants application and as well as community organizations. So, yeah, if you have any questions regarding those programs, I would be able to answer. And I love collaborating with various departments, whether it's CWLP applying for grants for boats accessible or for various community development. And so, yeah, that's a little bit about me, and thank you for having me here.
Thank you. Then Krista Colas, she's in charge of our Housing and Community Development Black Grant Funds.
Hello, everyone. I think I've been here before a couple times, but I'm the Operations Coordinator. I am managing the Community Development and Housing HUD funds for the city. I have been managing federal funds for 28 years through grant funds. I first came to the city in 2010, and I managed the CWLP Energy Services Office era grants. So came back last April. Tell you a little bit about some of the things we've been doing. We were able to get the 2019 CDBG CB3 and substantial amendment submitted, the 2020-24 consolidated plan and 2020 action plan, the 2021 annual action plan, the 2020 CAPER. We meet with HUD monthly. It's the last Wednesday of every month. If anybody ever wants to, you know, come and see what we're doing, you're more than welcome to come into the office. We speak with our, her, her name is Taylor Kylie. She's our CPD representative, and I think we talk to her every other day, twice, three, four times a week. So we are speaking to HUD quite a bit. We're ensuring that your funds are being used properly, managed properly. Anytime you guys need reports, you have folks that are in need of assistance, please refer them to our office. We're filtering them right, and we have all kinds of wonderful programs. Most recently, our office, OPEC, was the recipient of a $3.4 million lead grant. We want to thank our OPEC and our OB M partners on that. Without the work of our two offices, we would not have been able to secure that. This grant is going to assist 169 very low, low to moderate income households with kids that may have elevated blood lead levels. Just recently, September 21, we applied for another $2 million grant to assist more homes in Springfield or their healthy homes and any kind of health hazards that they might have in their home. We're working with the Illinois Department of Public Health, Saniamon County Public Health, SIU School of Medicine, and there's many more, and I can't think of them right now, and I apologize to anybody. But we do want to thank our partners at OB M for all their help with getting these grants in the door. We'll be negotiating next month, or next week, I'm sorry, next week for our lead grant with HUD, and we hope to hear in the next month about our $2 million healthy homes production. So send your folks over. We've got a lot of funds. We want to get them out the door, and we need your help to do it. So we look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least is Aaron Horwath. He's the Finance Officer for OPEC.
Good evening. My name's Aaron Horwath. I'm the Fiscal Officer for OPEC. I'm with the Office of Budget Management. I support the various programs that they have at OPEC through billing, invoicing, and reporting.
Great. Short and sweet. Alderwoman DeSensio.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. Who does everyone report to, since there isn't a director and hasn't been since March? The mayor's your director?
Currently, I report to Julie Zulgadar and-
Of course.
My director, Phil McCarthy.
Do you get double pay for that?
Um, no. Actually, with the Finance Office, Director McCarthy's been working with us to kind of consolidate and plan for succession. So if someone walks out the door, you have a backup plan with finance officers. In the past, you'd always have a finance person in Public Works or Economic Development or Convention Visitors Bureau, and so this way, we're able to take advantage of the talent that we have and pool that together and actually plan for succession if someone's out. Alderman Gregory?
I just, you know, I have met these young men, and Ms. Krista, I've worked with her before, but I do want to say that they bring a different energy, all of this team. They bring a different energy. I've seen some success in our community with really getting out and trying to match people up with funds. So I look forward to working with these gentlemen and young lady for a better community. I think it's a good team, and of course, we need a director, and I hope you get their roles.
Yeah, we will. Eventually, we're getting the right pieces in place, which we have a talented group, and so feel free to reach out to any one of them if you have any questions related to their expertise or let me know. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the September 21, 2021 City Council Meeting and Approve the Minutes. Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Voe, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this City Council Meeting.
All move.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Voe, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the Consent Agenda into the record- into the record of this City Council.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion?
Discussion, Mayor.
Alderman McMenamin.
I'll be a no vote for 2021-398. I'm in favor of the sports legacy complex, but I'm, the financing of it using such significant tax dollars is my problem. But on this particular proposal, 398, there's a question about whether we are extending the business district 13 years or 20 years. That question arose last week during the Committee of the Hall, and do we have an answer on that question?
Yes, we are. The proposal is to extend it 13. There's, I think, a reference in the whereas clause to refer to 23 years, but that would be the total. And 23 years is the maximum that's allowed under the state statute.
So, can you give us the termination date for the business?
I can get that for you. I don't, I don't remember if it's listed in the ordinance. It's 13 years from
That's really my question. 13 years from today's date or 13 years from a future date? And I just, it's been unclear last week, and it remains unclear.
Okay. The intent is 13 years from the current termination date for a total of 23. And it's my understanding, I don't have it right in front of me, on the existing termination date. I think it's in the development agreement. It's my memory. But I believe it's 11 years from now, or 10 years and a half. So the 13 years was to add 13 to get to a total of 23, which is the maximum the city's allowed to do.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. And the statute to give some comfort on that. The stat, the state law sets out that 23-year maximum term.
Thank you. And Mr. Clerk, have you got the no vote for that?
Thank you.
No.
Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? All those in favor of the consent agenda, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the consent agenda passes 10 voting yes, none voting no, and Alderman McMenamin voting no on 2021-398. Thank you. Agenda's numbers 2021-239, 2021-336, 2021-337, 2021-365, and 2021-370 remain tabled during committee. Next item on the agenda is 2021-371, an ordinance to decrease the number of Class C liquor licenses by one and increase the number of Class B liquor licenses by one for Hy-Vee Inc., doing business as Hy-Vee C Store located at 1025 Outer Park Drive. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2021-371 on final passage.
Mr. Mayor, I ask the council to hold this again. I talked with Todd Oliver, who I don't believe is here. He's our liquor commissioner administrator. And the correct person to, I need some information about the intent of this liquor license. And the correct person according to Todd to talk with is a corporate person in Iowa by the name of Kelly Palmer. I've called Kelly Palmer three times and left three voice messages and haven't been able to get a reply. So with the council's indulgence, I'd just like to hold this till we get a reply.
Been moved in second to holding committee. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2021-378, a resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that motor fuel tax rebuild funds, the amount of $317,121, may be used for construction phase engineering services, P E three, for the downtown traffic signals modernization and one-way street conversion project, M F T, section number 19-00489-00-TL. For the Office of Public Works, Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2021-378 on final passage.
So moved.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the motion passes eight voting yes, none, one voting no, and one voting present. Next item on the agenda is 2021-379, an ordinance authorizing an agreement for construction phase engineering services, P E dash three, with Knight Engineering, Inc., for the downtown traffic signal modernization and one-way street conversion project in an amount not to exceed $317,121 for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2021-379 on final passage.
Move to consent.
Second.
Been moved in second for passage, and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes eight voting yes, one voting no, one voting present. Next item on the agenda is 2021-390, an ordinance amending chapter 170, section 1, or 17.58 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to the registration of vacant buildings. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2021-390 on final passage.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to hold this. There is a young man here to speak on behalf of some concerned individuals, if we could have him speak.
Second. Been moved in second to, for discussion?
Yes.
And second for discussion. Someone in the audience wants to come forward and speak to this?
My name's Colin Cisco. I'm the Local Government Affairs Director with the Capital Area Realtors. And for this, for this amendment, one of the changes would be changing the timeline from three years to one years for a certificate of occupancy or demolish a building. And we believe that that will disincentivize investors to come in and revitalize these properties if they so choose. We just think that the one-year period can cause a lot of disincentivization, disincentivizations to come and revitalize. So we would like to work with Alderman Gregory and try to fix up this language.
So, I don't have a problem. I talked to also someone, Alderman McMenamin and some other Aldermen about this. I don't have a problem with it because we, you know, for me, it's really not to get after anybody who's in good faith, really trying to develop our community. But we have so many houses that we're really past the point of it taking too long to get them, get them back. So we really are looking to get after this. But with that, I'm fine with Alderman for a few weeks and work with you guys and try to come up with something for everyone. I don't have a problem with that.
Thank you. Alderman, handout.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think one of the concerns that I've had with it, and I'm for this ordinance, I've talked to Sean about it, Alderman Gregory about it. And Mr. Zirkel, I guess this question's for you. As long, once, if we go to court on one of these properties, we can't, I mean, if it's, if it hits a year and we go to court to get the court, you know, allow it to be torn down, if the court says, we got to wait until we contact the owner, whatever, we can't do anything, right? I mean, one of the concerns I think Mr. Cisco had was, okay, what's, what happens if it's in the court process? And I don't, we can't go against the court, can we?
Yeah, if it's already in the court process, you're saying?
Yeah, if it's already in the court process, you know, going through the court process, let's say they're having a hard time finding an out-of-town owner. What happens on that? How's that?
Well, the, in order to proceed in court, you're going to have to end up, just from a due process point of view, being able to get service on all owners, you know, so they have notice. You know, that's the definition of the, any kind of administrative or court process, whether circuit court or in the administrative court. And really, the issue with this is how long, what's the, if you will, the waiting period to get the process started? And so, the current process, and again, in my own view, is that these things become almost evolutionary, meaning you put things in place, you watch them, see how they work, and then you try to refine them and make them better. So the issue here is, do we benefit from trying to shorten the timeframe in order to get the process started, you know, sooner? But the reality is that we're always faced with, and everybody here I think has a strong understanding of that, you know, there's really a couple or three categories of properties. And, you know, either the property is truly almost like abandoned, meaning the current owner is, you know, letting, letting it go for taxes, you know, they're just not doing anything, it's just sitting there. Or maybe a person owns it, but they don't have the resources. So when you start getting into that, the sooner you can identify what category to put it in, it's, and that's all this process was designed to do, is to try to move the process to move more quickly and not let it simply be there for three years. So that was the original intent, but you certainly have to allow due process, you know, to property owners, without question. Or they're not bound. If they're not served, what ends up happening in civil cases many times is, if they're not served, if they don't participate, then they're not bound by the order.
Alderman Donlin?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just, I think it would be helpful if we could have a brief discussion, since we're talking about this this evening, on the existing, the existing city code. And my understanding is the existing city code, we're not talking about properties that are, let's say, someone's moved to Florida and they're selling their house and it's vacant and empty, or let's say a space at the mall as an example that is, has been vacant for a while. We're talking about problem properties and that are vacant, and then they get on the list. And what I think would be helpful for us to hear is, the present code says three years, but how often are those properties inspected? Do we wait till the three years is up and then start and then inspect the property, or do we inspect them as we go along, once they're placed on the list? Can somebody add some clarification for that for us this evening?
Well, I think probably Public Works would have to address that. But I think the way the process works is when they get into the registration mode, then they almost are put on the shelf, you know, absent some very material change, like maybe a roof falls in or something very serious. So the process, there's a volume involved, so I'm sure they are periodically reviewed, but not in the sense of, other than just monitoring pending the expiration of that three-year period. Because the, under the current code, a property owner does have that full three-year period to continue to make the, you know, payments. You know, you have a registration payment, and that was the original intent, I think, going back many years, was thinking that people wouldn't want to pay the registration fee, because it's several hundred dollars per year. And so, but what's happened is, as this has evolved, you're still ending up with quite a few properties on the registration list where the owner is not, you know, maybe taking steps, can't take steps, not interested in taking steps. But under our code, we're giving, we're waiting the full three years. So, again, it's, to me, it's kind of an evolutionary process. You kind of see what works, and then, you know, you go in and try to adjust it, or, and maybe it turns out that the one year's too short, or maybe we end up finding out that half of the ones on registration are really abandoned. So you start getting them in a category, so you know what to, what the next steps are.
Well, I appreciate that explanation, and I know Public Works is going to add to it. You know, if we, if we did indeed cut it, let me, let me, let me go into this first before I go that route. My understanding is that, under existing code, that once it's, a property's put on the three-year list, if a entity, organization, individual, whoever owns the property, is making progress, in other words, trying to abate the problems that put it on the list in the first place, that the city has the present ability to work with the property owner, extend the timeframe, and even, like, if it's three, two years and 11 months, then, you know, we're approaching that, and there's an administrative court hearing, it can be extended. But obviously, all of our goals is to get the property cleaned up, and, and we don't want, I wouldn't think so at least, the city doesn't want to spend money on demolishing buildings. We want to put our resources elsewhere. It's, you know, it'd be great to have the private investment to, to make the buildings viable again. But I think the, the point of the court process is, was a good question. I appreciate you bringing it up, because regardless if it's one year, or like it is now, three years, we still have that process in place, and the due process is there. But, you know, I'm, Alderman Gregory, it sounds like you're taking the lead on some of the changes. I'd love to talk to you about some of these things, because it doesn't sound like we're too far away to making this work. It seems like there might be some way to compromise, even if it was the three-year period where it was inspected, maybe on a regular basis, and progress is being made. I don't know, just as a thought, but something we could talk about later. But if we can hear from Public Works, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, they can come up, or Daryl, and then all the woman Connolly.
Mr. Cisco, have anything else before we
Did you have anything else, or you can come up?
I was just going to say that in the current vacant property registration code, it's not very clear on how the city handles if an individual does take, take over a property, a vacant registered property, and is working toward revitalizing it. There's no clear indication in the current code on whether or not, what the city can do. So it's kind of just up in the air. The city can pick and choose. So I would like to see some more strict language that says like what the city can and can't do for when somebody comes in and tries to revitalize these properties.
Yeah, we'll add clarity to that point. All the woman Connolly, then all the woman dissent.
Did you want Director
Yeah, if he wants to come up and
I think Alderman
Add clarity on the process.
Alderman Donlin had questions, yeah.
Thank you.
And to be fair, actually, Alderman Donlin and Mr. Cisco actually asked my questions for me. So, again, I just, I, go ahead, Director, sorry.
Hi, Nate. Glad you're here.
Hi, Director. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Our ultimate goal is to get compliance. We want people to fix them up. And that was, that was part of the goal, is to help expedite the process, because a property vacant for three years is going to be dilapidated and continue to deteriorate. So ultimately, we wanted to get to that one-year goal. And, and our ultimate goal is for them to fix it up. So we do work with, with the owners whenever we can in order for them to fix it up. We do periodic inspections, especially if they're working on it, to see if they deserve that extension as well. Or if we do get a complaint that, you know, it's, somebody took down the boarding or something along those lines, then we have to put the boarding back up. So we do periodic inspections, both proactively and reactive for in the area or if we get a complaint.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it, Director. Yep. All the woman Connolly, then dissent, so then Alderman Repat.
Thank you. And I just, just to clarify, I appreciate that, that description. I actually do support this one-year change, but I would, I agree that we need to have something in here that kind of codifies that, that approach, just in case someone else should be the new director. You're not laughing at me at that one. But no, but just because that is, that is an approach that, that, that has customer service sort of an orientation to it, that we're ensuring that these buildings, as best as possible, are moving back into, into active product, you know, being actively used. I think three years is too long to stay on there. And you, again, as Alderman Gregory pointed out, you get buildings start to fall apart if no one's working on them. This gives a little more incentive to get moving. But I do think if we need to, you know, if we could possibly add some language in here that just says, you know, in the subsection C where we're talking about kind of, or even the last section, that just recognizes that good faith, good faith efforts by the owner, whether it be the original owner or a new one, that those will be taken into account in terms of ending, you know, moving to that next phase. So, thank you.
We'll work with code enforcement and legal.
Yeah, and then, I mean, you can leave good faith, but something that recognizes that if you're doing something, you've got people working, but it's not occupant ready, that's great. But I think three years is actually too long, and we need to keep this heat on. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman, dissent.
I'm going to echo that three years is too long, but I think we've all seen properties in our ward that start work and then stop. They stop for long periods of time, or they do the necessary cosmetic work, and then they stop and leave a mess, and then maybe they'll start again. But, I mean, you know, three years is way, way too long. And I think a lot of us are very impatient with this, and we want to get this passed, because frankly, we're all tired of getting the phone calls about this sort of thing, and I'm sure you're tired of hearing from us as well. You don't have to nod on that one.
He's never tired of us.
I agree with Alderman Gregory's ordinance, and I want to say that there is value, though, to talk with the real estate people to come up with the, it's not about going after everybody. It's, Alderman Donlin made it clear that this is about a progressive thing, where we're going to go after the ones that are problem properties, and those are the ones we got to get cleaned up. And I've sat on this council for a long time, as others have, and we've all seen where the absent landlords are the ones that are a big the absent landlords are the ones that are the biggest problems. We have people from Chicago who dare us to sue them, and they'll just take us to court, and we never get out of court. So this is a good ordinance, but we do need to recognize some of the comments from the young man, and I'm glad you're going to meet with him, and hopefully Alderman Donlin will be involved in those discussions and give some input. But this is an important ordinance for our city, to get a lot of these disastrous properties cleaned up. Thank you.
Any other questions for Director Bott?
We raised some up for Snow.
Another individual signed up to speak, Bill Basket. State your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
My name is Bill Basket. I live on the 1300 block of North Third Street. I am the chairperson for the Springfield Inner City Older Neighborhoods PAC, ICON. Mayor Langfielder, ladies and gentlemen in the city council, I wish to thank you for allowing me to speak. I am here to express ICON's support for Ordinance 2021-390, amending Chapter 170, Section 17.58 pertaining to the registration of vacant buildings from three years to one year. ICON would also like to acknowledge the Bloomberg Report compiled and presented to Springfield by Megan Willis Jackson, Harvard Fellow. ICON is pleased to see an ordinance proposal come from this report in Ordinance 2020-390. Although this is a good first step in addressing the Bloomberg Report, there is much more hard work which lies ahead for the city of Springfield in addressing blight. ICON and the neighborhood associations affiliated with ICON are more than willing and able in helping Springfield in whatever capacity we can in addressing and fighting blight in the inner-city older neighborhoods. ICON has composed the following questions for the mayor and city council, which are as follows. Will properties actively registered under the current ordinance and up to date on paying their registration fees be grandfathered in the three-year track until they are either demolished or brought into ordinance compliance with a certificate of occupancy? Is it possible some property owners in a three-year program could have a theoretical never-end date, assuming they can have their deadlines extended through continuances in administrative court? Will there be compliance schedules given to those property owners who say they are making progress and ask for a continuance in administrative court? If there is compliance schedules given to the property owner, how transparent will these compliance schedules be in tracking the property on the city's website? Will those properties, which were previously registered under the current three-year ordinance, but the registration has expired, be allowed to re-register under the three-year program or be required to register under one-year ordinance? As per the ordinance Paragraph E states, each building that has been registered under this chapter shall be listed on the city's website, which listing shall include the address of the building and the name of the record owner of the property on which the building is located. Are the mayor and city council going to allocate the monetary and personnel resources to maintain an up-to-date database in order to comply with Section E in the ordinance? Thank you once again for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you. Any questions or comments? One thing I would suggest, we'll have a working group with Alderman Gregory and Alderman Donlin. I would suggest that Bill Basket and Cavalier Realtors be part of that, as well as we'll have someone from Public Works there to represent the administration, so. Any other questions or comments? Very good. So there's been motion to hold and second it. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 2021-396, an ordinance approving Millie Gooding Cheek to the Civil Service Commission. The Chair will entertain a motion, place Agenda Number 2021-396 on final passage.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I know Millie Gooding Cheek's here. I don't know if you want to come forward and say a few words.
Thanks for allowing me to be here this evening. I'll just tell you a little bit about myself. I've lived most of my adult life in Springfield. I have a bachelor's degree from Drake University in Des Moines, Iowa. Did my master's work at University of Illinois in Springfield. I've worked in both the private and public sectors. I currently work for an association on a part-time basis. I have two children, and I look forward to serving on the commission. If anybody has any questions for me, I'm happy to answer.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks for having me.
Is there a, it's been moved and seconded to, for approval, is that right?
Yes.
Very good. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion? Vote yes. So opposed? Vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes nine voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2021-397, an ordinance amending Chapter 90, adding Section 90.15.4 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended, changing from a package-only sale license to an onsite consumption license. Chair will entertain a motion, place Agenda Number 2021-397 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Chair will entertain a motion to amend, Agenda Number 2021-397.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Council, if you want to go over the amendment?
The, excuse me.
Yep.
The proposed amendment is one that was discussed, if you recall, at the committee of the whole. I did provide copies with a highlighted section that adds subsection 90.15.5 referencing 3 a.m. liquor licenses and sales. This provision provides that no new liquor license shall be granted that allows for the sale of alcoholic drink for consumption on the premises, or the sale in the original package for consumption off the premises between the hours of 1 a.m. and 7 a.m. after the effective date of this amendment. It indicates that this shall not apply to the renewal or transfer of existing licenses or to Class K licenses, which are the full-service hotels, like minibars, you know, in the rooms. This section does not apply to the extended hours of operation permitted under Section 9030B, which is for, for example, New Year's Eve, or the state fair, or Section 90.36.1, which you may recall, there are permits, single permits that allow an individual licensee to stay open later, but with the permission of the Alderman. So there are specific, you know, temporary little ones that this would not interfere with. So that's kind of a summary, and I don't know if there are questions, but that reflects the language.
Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The reason why I proposed this last week was, when, we've got a problem with police protection throughout the city, from around 2 o'clock in the morning till about 4 o'clock in the morning, or later, I guess, if, it depends on how crazy the crowd is when they leave these 3 o'clock bars. Many times, we don't have police protection on the, in most of the wards, except for the ones that have the 3 o'clock license. That's the purpose of doing this. The people that have the 3 o'clock license, they're still going to have it, it's just saying, we're not going to go forward. We allowed, the last 3 o'clock license, we allowed, quite frankly, I wish I would have had that vote back, because I would have voted no, after, because it's been one of the places that we've had nothing but problems with, and it was shut down for, I don't know, over a year. But we were sold a bill of goods on it. And I just, I think that this is for, and I know people will say, well, the kids, you know, want to go out, people want to go out, understand that, but in other municipalities where they have a lot of kids, in college towns and that, they shut down a lot of times at 1 o'clock. I think a lot of them are at 1 o'clock. So that was my purpose on it. You know, it's strictly, my purpose on this is strictly for police protection. Also, this kind of activity where they have to go to the 3 o'clock bars, it really tacks our police department, and, you know, I don't know where Kenny or anybody, Kenny's up there, if he wants to come down and talk about what it does, but we've got a police department right now where we're short-staffed. We don't have that many police officers out on the, on the street, you know, in any given shift, and, you know, they have to go, sometimes they have to go in these bars to rouse people out, and, or, you know, break up a fight or whatever, and, you know, it puts them in a bad situation, so that's, I'm not going to dwell on it anymore. If Kenny wants to, if you would allow him to talk about what, you know, from the police department's standpoint, I'd appreciate that.
May I have a question?
Yep. Alderwoman Purchase?
Is that temporary, what Alderman Hanauer is talking about, with us having a shortage, so it's not like this is going to be forever, where we don't have the manpower to go to these establishments, correct?
Yeah. Assistant Chief Scarlett can speak to the staffing level of the police department.
Thanks, Mayor, and appreciate the opportunity to come speak. And I would say that honestly, I feel that it's more about the temporary situation that we're involved in right now with our manpower. On any given Friday or Saturday night, we would have what was called the weekend closing detail, where we have to suck all of our resources from the entire city to various locations where we know we're going to have issues, and that's typically that 2:30 closing time to 3:30, sometimes 4 o'clock. So on any given weekend, it's typical to have, I would say, 10 to 14 or 15 officers at those locations where we know there are going to be issues because of the 3 o'clock closing. So it is taxing on manpower. It does affect our ability to respond to other calls for service. It does affect our proactivity when it comes to patrolling the streets for burglars, or whatever the case may be, for sure.
Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a question, I don't know, maybe for the Corporation Council, but do we have existing requirements that bars with a 3 a.m. license provide their own security?
Well, they do, they do require their own security. The, in other words, they're, the city is not providing, you know, individual security for a business, it's only if the incident happens, where it might be appropriate because it's criminal, perhaps criminal conduct, but the, you know, individual business is responsible for its own, you know, security inside, for example, inside its facility and things of that nature.
But do we require that they have staff onsite?
Does the city code, you mean, set out a?
Yes, that's my, that's my question.
Okay, require them to hire security?
Yes. I mean, because I will say, I mean, and I appreciate the stress that this puts on an understaffed department, that from what we've been told, it is going to take a while to get back up to even a reasonable staffing level. My concern is that we shut this door on 3 a.m. licenses, which we haven't given out since I've been on council, haven't seen one, shut that door absent, maybe looking for some other obligations that we can connect to these licenses. I mean, I know there have been other incidents where we've had off-duty officers providing security at, you know, that's, I mean, I'm not saying that they need to work a second job, but, you know, the police, I'd like them to get arrested, but, you know, I think if we require that these later bars have their own security that can provide supports that's not just inside the building, but also outside as people are exiting, that might be a more reasonable, you know, stop things before they require a police department, and certainly, if it's an opportunity for our off-duty police officers to earn a little extra money, I think that would be a fabulous option for them. But I think that we could put maybe a little more onus on the people who are making money off of this and want to continue it, and if someone wants to come in with a new license, they should come into compliance with basic safety from an owner's perspective, as opposed to the city just saying, no, you can't, so. And I appreciate, again, Alderman Hanauer, I appreciate where you're coming with this amendment, but I just want to be careful that we don't close too many doors without exploring other options.
If you wouldn't mind, I would speak on the off-duty component, so we do allow our officers to work off-duty jobs. They have to file a request to work certain jobs, and we, the chief and I approve those. And one thing we do not allow is our officers to work on the interior of bars. We have allowed officers to work parking lots, you know, on the streets associated with bars and that sort of thing. I will tell you this, that there's currently a situation where we have off-duty officers that were working security on the outside, involved in an incident, which now they're on duty, so the city owns them, and they're involved in a lawsuit. So those are just some things, a use-of-force situation. Those are just things we have to take into consideration.
Other complications.
The issue related to what the chief is talking about, the assistant chief is talking about, is very serious, because if we allow a police officer to go to a place in their uniform, carrying their gun or their badge, something happens, that is a liability issue for the city, even when they're off-duty. And the example that's being given, we're involved in federal court right now, that's involved a lot of litigation, so that's a reason why the chief, the department takes very serious about what they will allow and not allow an officer to do, because the city can, in effect, be liable for that, even though they're working for a private party by virtue of their authority and position.
And I appreciate that. I guess my bigger point was, maybe we need to be looking at putting more obligations on the owners of these 3 a.m. bars, as opposed to putting all of the weight on the shoulders of our police department, in terms of even official duties. So just something to kind of consider. I do think we should keep this door as an option for new businesses as they come in.
Yeah, I think on the one that had been suspended previously, they do have to have, that's a requirement now, going forward, that they have to have their own security, and so we address it as we need to, but that's something we'll take into consideration. Alderman Donlin, and then Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderwoman Conley, I think that is a good idea, and something we should talk about in the future. On the issue of the staffing levels, Chief, what's the number of police officers, sworn officers, we have presently?
So we're authorized 250. We have approximately, I would say, about 20 short, so we're around 230. Now, keep in mind, 15 of those are currently in academies, they do us no good for probably another five or six months, they got to get out of academy, go through training.
And you mentioned that it takes 10 officers to deal with present situations, so the 3 a.m. license approximately, it could be a little less, could be a little more, it just depends.
Depends on circumstances.
And at the high level of the police department, my understanding is that we had 280 officers, is that right?
At one time, yes.
Okay, so we had 280 officers. I remember vividly back during that time that we had the same exact situation, where a significant portion of the shift, we're going to these establishments, and having to deal with the exact same issue. It hasn't changed, it's been going on for decades, I would venture to say.
Throughout my 23 and a half years, yes.
Right. And it's even more difficult today because of the staffing situations, but it was still difficult under the old situation. My point is that we can, even if we went back up to the maximum level of our department, it would still be the same issue. Now, Alderman Hanauer, I think to your ordinance, or to your amendment, it's fair, because it would not impact existing establishments. It would only bar the 3 a.m. licenses for new establishments, isn't that correct?
Correct.
So, anyway, I think the, in my opinion, the safety of the citizens, the resources of the police department and the city is more important than other things that have been brought up this evening, with all due respect. Thank you.
Alderman Gregory?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I respect everyone's opinion, I think we all have made some valid points. I more lean on the side of dealing with whatever issue we're happening, having at a particular moment, whether that's a club in my ward, or a park in my ward, or whatever. We have to be innovative and try to address these things, and work with, we worked with the park before to deal with some problems, and, you know, for the issue that we've had, you know, we need to work with the owner, because these owners, you know, that are having these clubs, they don't want that stuff that happens. On my way here, there was just a shooting, it was 4 o'clock. happens. Uh, on my way here, there was just a shooting. It was four o'clock in the afternoon. Um, so, so violence happens. There's no particular time. It's a little slower at night, so we see a lot more of it and we hear it. But there's violence that happens throughout the city all day long. A man was just shot and killed on the south side of my ward, nine o'clock last night. So, eh, eh, that's why I, I'm really fighting for the resources to really put into, um, to help these situations, not even where from homeless to, to, um, um, many of the things underlying issues that we really need to address. Or we're going to be going through this for the rest of our terms and the next terms. And, and that's what we have to do. And that's how we're going to fix this situation. Not being, closing everything down or closing down at one o'clock. There is some college, um, towns that close at one o'clock and the kids hate it. Um, the people in the town hate it. Uh, they want to hang out a little bit longer. We don't have a lot. Um, we've talked about, like I said, casinos and, um, different business ventures to try to grow this city, to try to add to our revenue, to help get more officers, to help pay for firefighters and all the things that we're struggling at right now. And, and, and we just deal with the issue. We just deal with the issue, in my opinion. And, and instead of blanking it at everybody, I hate for everybody to throw everybody in the same bucket. I hate it. I hate to be done, done like that. I'm sure none of us want to be thrown in the one large bucket. Um, and, and that's as well standing on this.
Alderman Redpath?
So, when we're talking about private security for, uh, these establishments, you've got to understand, they can handle certain situations. They can't handle the big ones. Our police officers are always going to be there. They're going to have to sit outside and wait till this thing spills into the street, which it will. And then we're going to, then, then it's going to be a situation where there's police officers tied up at one scene and they're not out in Ward Six, or not out in Ward Ten, they're not out in Ward One. They're tied up in the, in a situation where the city's not covered. I live in the biggest geographic ward in the city. The district that I have, and my police district goes, starts at South Grand, goes to Toronto Road. If you could figure that out, that's a pretty big district. And we have one officer, okay? That officer, if there's trouble somewhere in the city, so, a lot of times has to pull out of there. We have to depend on the county, have to depend on UIS, Lincolnland, uh, Southern View and others to help cover us. And am I correct with the, 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 when we call other agencies in to help us out?
Well, it's 100%. And we are innovative, as, as Alderman Gregory says, in our, our response. And if we have to use other agencies, we have other resources that obviously don't work.
So, that's, that's the situation we're in. And it happens on the outskirts of town all over. I know what happens out in Ward Six, and Ward Seven, and Ward Ten, just like it does in my ward. The bottom line is, is the cities around us have gotten rid of these three o'clock licenses and they got rid of them because of the problems that they cause. I talked to the police union today. They are total support of us, of this, of this ordinance. And, and we're giving, we're giving the people who have these three o'clock licenses an opportunity to, to, to live up to it. And what that means is, take care of your own business and keep things from getting out of control. Private security is good, but it's not going to be enough. Because when they get in there to a situation where they have two or 300 people show up in your parking lot, uh, we're not going to send our officers into the middle of that situation. We're going to, that, that puts our officers in a bad way. We, we need more officers. We, they know it. The mayor knows it. We all know it. And we got to find the resources to do that. But 3:00 AM licenses, nothing good happens after one o'clock. And the revenue that comes in on a three o'clock license is, is minimal. It's not going to be enough to, to justify the resources that we have to use. I encourage this council to support this ordinance and this amendment because it, it will be beneficial to the city of Springfield.
Thanks.
Any other comments?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, Alderman Williams.
So, I, I support the ordinance, but, but I'm going to vote against the amendment. I, I, I see it as a, a form of mass punishment. I know that, uh, if three o'clock ever went away, that don't mean people's going to go home at one o'clock. That they're, they're going to go somewhere. They're going to do something. And they're, because they're young. I mean, because it's a quality life issue for them. They want something to do. They don't want to park, you know, roll up the sidewalks and everybody go home and go, they're not going to do that just because everything's closing at one. Now, I'm glad that we are going to grandfather, if this goes this way, them in, the ones that exist now. But then it's like, uh, for the future growth, we are a city. All cities experience this kind of stuff. We're not Chatham, we're not Rochester. So, sure, the surrounding ones, maybe they shouldn't be open till three. They're not big enough, or maybe because they come all over here. But I just think it's a quality of life issue. I think the market has to dictate a lot of stuff. And if you have a problem, you deal with that problem. You don't pass stuff that affects everybody. That, there's three o'clock places, uh, when's the last time the police went to the Crown Plaza because it was, you know, and they had three o'clock? When's the la- so, my ward has a mixture. And all I'm saying is, all three o'clock bars ain't bad. Deal with the problems. Deal with the one, first of all, it's only seven, ain't it? Six, seven licenses. So, we're not talking about a whole lot of licenses. So, I just don't understand why we think that we have to, to, to put an amendment like this onto this bill. Just what I have.
Any other questions or comments? We do have two people sign up to speak. First is Mike Mansour, and the next one's Alice Rainey.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Mansour. I'm here on behalf of, of representing the Central Illinois Licensed Beverage Association. Our association represents bars and restaurants in our community here. Um, I'm here because many of them are working right now during the dinner hour and they can't attend these meetings. Um, with that said, uh, the mayor had contacted us about the original ordinance and if we could get support for the original ordinance from the association. And we had time to present it to the association. And, uh, last week I spoke to you. I was very direct with you, but with the intention of helping you. Um, and the association did support the amendment. Uh, Lieutenant Alderman offered the amendment, I'm, I'm sorry. And we weren't able to say yea or nay on that at that time. I want to let you know, last night, we had our chapter meeting. And, it's hard to breathe with this. Uh, at our chapter meeting, we presented the issue to the members that were in attendance. And to me personally, to our surprise, the membership supported the amendment, um, for the reasons that, uh, Alderman Hanauer, which I had not had the opportunity to speak to about this, uh, presented. Uh, with that said, we also had the same questions that many of you have about the impact and the long-term impact it would have on our city and our community. Uh, not only with tourism, but the quality of life and, and, and for our younger generation. But then we think about our police department. And we're strong supporters of our police department and the safety of the community. So, our proposal is possibly not go with the amendment this evening, but let's have a discussion. And our association would be willing to sit down and maybe come up with a good solution and not one that has been tagged on to an ordinance that we already agreed to. Um, I think the end result will be what Lieutenant Alderman, uh, Hanauer is trying to achieve. And Chuck Redpath, you are absolutely right. You know, we can't have our officers already strapped, you know, going to s- different areas. But, uh, if it passes, I think you have the support. But we're asking for that time to discuss it and come up with a solution together. Uh, that maybe makes a little more sense? You know, I mean, I, I say that respectfully. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Alice Rainey?
I really don't know how to approach this, okay? Because I've had three o'clock license. I had an officer at my bar. I work where there were license, uh, bar people taking care of their license at three o'clock and officers at the door. So, it's pretty hard for me to say this, but I don't believe in three o'clock license, never did, but I had one. Because I lived in the county and I could get them, you know, and have fun. I believe that our police officers are short. They don't need to be running and, and handling little fights that the owners can handle theirselves. If these owners do not take care of their bar license, they should not have them and they should be revoked. If they can't handle the situation, then get rid of the bar and get rid of the license. I feel that three o'clock license is a detriment to, to this city until such time that they understand what they are. There is very strict, you don't make a lot of money from one to three. Maybe about $500 to pay for a couple of beers, okay? That's about it, okay? And don't even help pay for your license you have to pay every year, or your insurance that you have to have, and the help you have to have. So, it's not really economical for them to have it. I don't want to see a police officer get shot in the leg because he was trying to get something taken care of at one of these crazy bars. I don't like that, never have. Uh, because my family were in the police department and judges. So, you see, I'm kind of partial to those people. Plus, it doesn't give a good name when you have somebody come in here and they want to start a business. And already you hear about Dirty South, or you hear about some other place that's already had shootings, okay? Uh, we want our city to have peace, be able to make money for our owners, our businesses, our black owner businesses and the whole 25 yards. If you vote against this, then you have to pay the consequences. That's how it is. And I had to pay it. And it's not fun coming in your pocket and paying out a hundred thousand dollars. It's not fun. And that's for three o'clock license I had. I had a country and western bar. So, I think it's time that we all sit back and look at this ordinance and not pin it on something else. Make it a separate ordinance. I think it's better that way. And if you, people want to have a party up until three in their little backyard or whatever the case may be, if they have a bar or whatever, then let's make it optional. Can't even talk. Optional to that point of the party. And then that's it. Let them pay that $1,500 and that's it. After that time is up, you don't have them anymore. We have to have a separate ordinance on this three o'clock license, Mayor, as you know, okay? To hang it on to this, it's not going to work. Because you already grandfathered the other th- uh, six in, which if you take away these three license for the new ones coming in, they're going to say, hey, how come they got that? You know, that's not fair either. You don't need that conversation. So, make this a separate entity, the three o'clock license, and make it strong enough and have enough that you can have a party, like the fair. They stay open until three, okay? And they usually handle theirs very well, okay? Sometimes you might have a little fight because Johnny saw his girlfriend do this and whatever, okay? But you have to be able to have A, B, C, D, and E in a separate entity. And if I were you, Mayor, I'd make it a separate entity since you're the people, okay?
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, say nay.
Nay.
Roll call.
Roll call, vote.
Alderman Redpath?
Aye.
Alderman Gregory?
Nay.
Alderman Williams?
No.
Alderman Philginsy?
Aye.
Alderwoman Lakeisha Purchase?
Nay.
Alderwoman DeSensa?
No.
Alderman McMenamin?
Yes.
Alderwoman Connolly?
No.
Alderman Donnelly?
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer?
Aye.
Four ayes and s- five nays, Mayor. The motion fails. Is there a motion on the ordinance? Full move?
Uh, yeah, further, uh, further, yeah, second and further discussion. I've got a, an amendment on nothing to do with what we've been talking about tonight, but, um, basically, the original intended, uh, the original ordinance as drafted says, hey, if you're been a package-only and then you want to become consumption, um, you have to stay consumption and you can't do any package. So, um, I think that's maybe an overbroad, um, result. Because let me give you a couple of examples. Um, in, uh, we've got Corkscrew on Chatham Road. It was package-only and then it became consumption because they wanted to have tasting parties and that kind of thing. But they never got video gaming. They never got video gaming. Uh, or even like Harvest on Chatham, on Route Four. I think their package, and they may have be begun package, but they're definitely a port also now. And they have kind of events where they can pour the liquor, but they have no video gaming. And I don't think they ever intend to have video gaming. So, I like to see this written so that we can still allow that type of situation. Someone that's package and they want to become poor, but they won't ever have video gaming. And so, I've got a proposed amendment that basically tries to say that. There'd be an additional sentence to this amended, uh, 90.15.4. And it says basically, um, however such licensees that have no video gaming are not limited to Class A, D, or E licenses if they remain free of video gaming. And, uh, I've got that written down here. Um, so basically, it just says, hey, if you're, if you're package-only now and you want to go do package and consumption, yeah, you can do that, but with the condition that you remain free of video gaming.
Alderman Hanauer?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the, in, in, Alderman McMenamin's right. You know, a lot of grocery stores now, they're start, that they have their package liquor and then they also have a, um, well, it's, it's like a little restaurant, you know, where they, they sell alcohol. Um, you know, and they don't have gaming. I mean, the purpose of this is to stop the game. And I don't know if the, if, I, I guess I'd leave it up to, um, um, you know, corporate, Corporation Council. But if, if that, if that amendment does it, that, that's great. Because we, we are going to have somebody else that comes in here at some point in time that's going to want to open up a store, you know, uh, like Harvest Market or, or wherever. Um, and, uh, that's, they're going, that's going to be a big part of it. And so, this, I guess my big question is, does this prevent that from happening in the future?
Well, the, the stores you're talking about will have really two licenses, or sometimes three. So, the package liquor area, you know, if you look at most of the grocery stores, are actually in a separate area of the store. So, they have a separate package license. They then will apply for a restaurant license. So, you may have an entity only having more than one license. And so, the circumstance that this is describing really is not that situation. Because anyone is free to apply for more than one license, you know, in a separated, uh, uh, license premises. And you typically see that with, uh, large stores. Uh, Harvest Market is a very good example. I think Hy-Vee, if my memory serves me, has a package liquor area that's at the north end of the store. Then at the south end, they have, I think, something they call the grill. Well, those are licensed, for example, as a restaurant or as a bar separately. So, each license has its own, its own restrictions. So, under the gaming law, I think where some of the confusion is, remember, the city does not, uh, say, uh, really per se who can get, uh, or establish the gaming. It's really the State Gaming Commission. And the state law says that if you are package liquor, you may not have a gaming license. You may not have it. So, um, but a gaming, uh, I'm sorry, a package liquor store could certainly decide, I would like to change from a package liquor and become a tavern or a restaurant. See what I mean? In other words, they would just go and apply for a different license. And so, the, uh, circumstance here is where there appears to be almost a hybrid model developing where you might have a, uh, package liquor that wants a small poor area in order to get gaming, even though their principal business is still package liquor. And so, that's the, it's really not the grocery store issues or things like that. So, the, uh, direction, uh, from the mayor was to try to address that specific, uh, situation where you would have a package liquor only, not a grocery store, package liquor, that wanted to, uh, convert, which they certainly are allowed to convert, but they just have to make a choice. Do they want to become a, for example, a tavern? Do they want to come a restaurant? Do they want to come, A, D, and E are either restaurant or tavern licenses, but you couldn't continue to sell package? Now, there is a license called a double A that allows a tavern that can do, uh, package liquor. But there are very few of those and they're mostly have been kind of neighborhood type taverns or things of that nature. So, I don't know if that helps or not, but the intent was, it would, this would not affect, for example, a grocery store or Harvest Market.
But the double A could, they could go for the double A and it'd do the same thing as what we're trying to prevent.
Well, except that they're, they're limited to an A, a D, or an E. If they convert, they're limited to an A, D, or E. So, that would preclude the package liquor. So that would preclude the package liquor.
Double A can go for video gaming, can't they?
Yeah, double A or, or an A or a D or an E can as well.
Alderman Hanauer, then Alderman Redpath.
I apologize for drawing this out, but, okay, so I want to have a liquor store, but I want to make sure I got gaming, you know, basically what we're, what we're dealing with. Let's say the liquor store out in Toronto Road. So instead of doing a liquor store, what they do is they put in a little bar and then they say, oh, yeah, we're going to get the double A, we're going to sell package liquor too. And then they have a big package liquor store, but they, and they've got a double A license, they apply for the, they apply for gaming and they've got it. There's nothing we can do about it.
But, and that's what this amendment addresses. That would keep that from happening.
How could it? Because if I say I'm going to have a tavern...
Because it's limited to a Class A, D, or E. If they make that conversion, they cannot apply for a double A.
But I'm talking about new, any new, any new, that's what they're going to do. Think about that.
So there wouldn't be a conversion, you're just saying a new entity.
Yeah, a new entity.
Well, the other option is not giving out any more double As. How many, we can find out how many bars sell packaged liquor. I'm not sure.
You're the liquor commissioner, you can say no.
Yeah.
Uh huh. Well, supposedly. Alderman Redpath. Did you have something else, Alderman Redpath?
Said you're the liquor commissioner, you can say no to double As.
So is there a motion on the amendment?
Or three ams.
Well, on Joe, you're talking about...
I think the amendment is harmless and I'm not sure I agree with the, with the Corkscrew analysis where they started out with a package only and then I think this ordinance as introduced could prevent Corkscrew from becoming package and consumption.
Well, but just to be clear, I'm not, I'm not specifically aware of the Corkscrew situation, but a package liquor can have tasting. You see that all the time where they'll have wine or something, they're just not selling it. It's like they're allowing, you know, people to have samples and things of that nature. So they do have the ability, a packaged liquor can have a situation where on a Saturday or a Friday or whatever they pick to do, they might be able to open wine bottles or give tasting, like a tasting area, but they're not really acting per se as a tavern where they're selling by the, by the glass.
Okay, with that explanation, let's go forward with a vote on the ordinance as it presently stands. And if Todd Oliver gets back with us and says we've got a problem, we can address it later.
Sure. Is there any other discussion on the ordinance?
Call a question.
All those in favor, motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes six voting yes, seven voting yes, two voting no, and one voting present. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 2021-399, an ordinance authorizing additional funding in an amount not to exceed one hundred and forty-three thousand dollars under contract number UW21-11-50, powdered activated carbon with Carb Pure Technologies LLC for a total amount not to exceed three hundred and nine thousand dollars for the Office of Public Utilities for Emergency Passage. Chair will entertain a motion, place Agenda Number 2021-359 on final passage.
Full move.
Second.
Full move and second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes eleven voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2021-406, an ordinance authorizing acceptance and execution of grant number 22-751029 from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity under the Local Tourism and Convention Bureau Grant Program in the amount of five hundred and fourteen thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars with matching funds required in the amount of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars fifty cents beginning July first, 2021 through June thirtieth. And a supplemental appropriation in the amount of five hundred and fourteen thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars for the Springfield Convention Visitors Bureau for Emergency Passage. Chair will entertain a motion, place Agenda Number 2021-406 on final passage.
Full move.
Second.
Full move and second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes ten voting yes, none voting no, and one voting present. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend with rules in place on first reading Agenda Number 2021-419, an ordinance approving the appointment of Justine Macklin to the Civil Service Commission.
Full move.
Second.
Full move and second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Vote, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend with rules in place on first reading Agenda Number 2021-420, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an agreement between the City of Springfield and GR Consulting LLC for professional lobbying in an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars for the Office of the Mayor.
Full move.
Second.
Full move and second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, say nay. Motion carries. Is there any unfinished business? Come before the council.
Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Hanauer.
Real quick, I had a constituent contact me. I guess I'm calling it old business because this happened way back when, when, when we did this, but he had business downtown. He pulled into the municipal lot, you know, across the street. There's no signage on how much it cost, so there's a sign that says, go to the desk at the Hilton, I think it's a Hilton or Wyndham, wherever, whatever it is this week, and the hotel there. And he, so he went and he said, I'm going to be, I've got an hour meeting and I'm going to, I'll be out. And they said, well, it's eleven dollars. And I remember, I mean, I know the hotel now operates that correct. Do they, or do we lease it to them or what? How's that whole thing go? And I guess my concern is, they, they need to put a sign up that gives their rates so that people that don't want to go in there, they can, they can go somewhere else. And I just think, and I've actually had a couple of people call me about this. And I told this one gentleman I'd bring it up tonight because that's just not right.
Yeah, we can talk after the meeting and check that out, but as a matter of fact, I'll be talking to the owner later tonight because they just opened up Starbucks, so I'll converse with him about that.
Okay.
Alderman Gregory?
Mayor, I have to ask you, where's the, where's the weed for money, the business, the cannabis business? I'm getting talked to, I'm messing with Joe with that. But where, what are we doing with that cannabis business program? We need to get it out and I've had a thousand questions about it and, you know, I have no explanation.
Yeah, the money's still there with regards to that, but the, with regards to the program, we can meet on it this week. Actually, Robbie and the investment did come up with the parameters, so we'll discuss it and then hopefully finalize it next week.
Okay, thank you, sir. And just my final question, I'll be having to make myself some notes. This will probably be directed to Budget Director McCarty, but have we got the new numbers from the Out West Dispensary yet, like we did with the last two? I know we had to get a privacy letter.
Well, the dollars are coming in, but I don't have the, the letter that would allow us to disclose those numbers publicly like we have for the downtown location.
Okay. Any timeframe that you're looking to get that or are they...
That's actually a question for, I think, the mayor and Corporation Council. They were the ones who got the last letter. And so I think, I'm not sure if they've had any success with that yet or not. Yeah, we'll try to get in touch with the owner.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Alderman, I'm sorry, City Clerk, Lesko, and then Alderman Donnelly.
Mayor, I wanted to let everyone know that the clerk's office did print out the audit from this morning, or that you had earlier in this council meeting. It's a rather large file, so if any of the aldermen or the public want to review it without having to print it out, it is available in the clerk's office for review.
The hard copy is.
The hard copy. Okay. Thank you.
Any other unfinished business? One item is, we are progressing with the firehouse property location search, so hopefully we'll have a update for everybody in about thirty days. Alderwoman Connolly and then Alderwoman DeSenzo.
Thank you, Mayor. I was actually going to ask what's going on with the, the review report that you commissioned for the fire department?
Yep.
Is that going to be available sometime soon?
Director McCarty can give an update on that. He's getting his steps in tonight.
I know, right? I have it just sitting right here until this part's done. Alderwoman, I did reach out to the consultants a couple of weeks ago per the mayor's request to get a status update and they had indicated that they were trying to finalize the report. They thought it would take two to three weeks to do so, so theoretically we should have it any day now. I'll reach out to them again tomorrow to see if we can get another update and I'll let everybody know.
Appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderwoman DeSenzo?
Yes, we had another crash. This isn't for you, Director.
Not for me?
No.
Stay right here, everybody.
Would you be able to hang around?
We had another crash at Fayette and MacArthur over the weekend. I don't know how many times I have to bring this up, but that area is extremely dangerous and I've, I've harped on it several times up here and I don't see any effort from either the Park District or the city to rectify that situation. You know, other cities can figure out a pedestrian crosswalk, it's not that difficult. I don't know why we can't do something in that area. It's extremely frustrating. I get dozens of calls a week about just that area because the park is so used. You know, I live right in that area. Joe has the west side of that area and he probably hears the complaints as well. So something's got to be done, once and for all. This is, I'm tired of talking about it, I'm tired of hearing about it, and I'm tired of putting the residents in danger.
We were looking at possibly our next application for the safety improvements for the entire corridor right through there. We obviously did just apply for the HESIP funds and receive them for MacArthur and Lawrence, but that's, that's another area we're evaluating and we can maybe look at doing something interim as well.
I mean, have we worked with the Park District at all? Have we approached them to do anything?
We talked with the Park District. We did put in the, the crossing a little bit further on the south side, but we'll reach back out to them as well, see if they're interested in partnering too.
Thank you.
We can add flashing lights or do something of that nature and try something else because I know we tried the mini sign and the road didn't work, but we'll take a look at some other signage because with regards to the road structure, that was like walnut. I mean, that took a while to have that road diet put in, so.
Yeah, and we looked at possibly reducing it down, however, due to the ADT and everything along those lines with South Grand as well as Lawrence Avenue being so close. I don't know if that'll work and you may have some merging and weaving issues, so , but our traffic engineer is going out there every couple of days to see if there's something we can do.
I'm just asking for a safe, safe way to cross into the park, across MacArthur. You know, I now have a teenage son who goes to the park all the time and every time I'm like, be careful crossing MacArthur. So even a thirteen-year-old brain says, I'll go to the light.
Right.
So he'll go down to South Grand and wait for the light as opposed to trying to get through on Williams. And that's just, it's just not acceptable.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, Alderman McMenamin, then Alderman Donnelly.
Director, I guess roughly five or six years ago when we were trying to address this issue, the original proposal was to put the walkway in the middle of the Boulevard, not at the south end, but in the middle because it's wider there and it could accommodate an island. We did attempt the island at the south end of that crossway of Williams Boulevard and MacArthur Boulevard and that island indicated that it's a crossway got hit and disappeared real quick. So think about whether the middle point of that intersection where it's wider could accommodate an island to, even a flashing indicator it's a pedestrian crosswalk to slow down the traffic and give more protection to the pedestrians trying to cross there. Think about that, whether we want to try that approach again. It's supposed to be at the southern end where it's narrower from curb to curb, it's narrower at the south end from curb to curb, whereas towards the middle of that intersection, that's a Boulevard intersection, so there's two parallel roads. And the middle point of the east-west parallel roads might accommodate something safer.
That's one thing we're looking at. We can't put a median in the middle, obviously, those lanes are already so narrow at this time, but that is one thing that we're looking at at this time for an intermission.
Yeah, if not a curb island, at least a, a sign, a stationary sign that's planted into the, into the roadway.
Alderman Donnelly?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I wasn't going to talk about this topic, but I appreciate you bringing it up. Alderwoman DeSenzo, having been, driving in that area all the time. But I see in other states, in particular Florida, we used to go to Florida back when we used to go places, but anyway, they have these, you know, crossings that say it's the law and you've seen these, Nate, and they have, you know, when someone pushes the button, they blink, something like that, obviously, I'm sure you're considering. But anyway, the question I have is a completely different topic. If we have an idea for, because some of the firehouse locations that have been mentioned as far as, you know, reconfiguring where they are and the layouts and so forth, if we have an idea of potential locations, Mayor, do we get that to you or the chief or what do you prefer since there's a consultant involved?
Yeah, you can get the location to the chief. What we have him do is run the, or he can come up and explain it.
No, that's, that's good enough for me.
How he runs the calls of service and it creates a mapping of nodes and then making sure there's, determining what the response time is for EMS calls and fire calls.
Chief, just what I'm really getting at is before a report is presented and we've quote, you know, kind of headed down a path, I'd at least like to have that conversation with you, according to the mayor, it needs to be with you, so happy to have that.
Yeah, what we'll do is, what we've done already is looked at in multiple locations and what we can do is run statistics GIS-wise as far as where within our four-minute response time we can get from each one of those locations and then try and plot the best place to make sure that we have coverage, especially, you know, in the areas that we've talked about before. But most of it is just utilizing GIS data and how fast that we can get places. We've looked at probably a dozen or more places. We've come up with, with some that we like right now, but as the mayor spoke about, we'd like to make sure that we get those and a little bit more information on them and get those in place before we...
Thank you, Chief. And then while we're up there, kind of really, well, it's fire department related. How are you on, because we talk about it every budget year, as far as starting in new class, that period, new hires? Where is that?
We've, I've had some discussions with the mayor's office about that. Obviously, that's going to be a decision that, that comes from the mayor's office. We're currently understaffed. It's affecting our overtime. I know that there's, you know, a desire to wait and see how the, both the negotiations and the, the report that comes back from the consultants goes. Generally though, the, one of the issues is, is that it takes about sixteen weeks to get all the background checks done, all of the preliminary information before we can actually offer the job to the people who are currently on the list. And then it'll take another six months after that to get them trained and in place. You're talking about something that's going to take about ten months from start to finish. So even if, even if the mayor came to me tomorrow and said, let's start a class, we would not have those people probably in place until next July, which means that they're going to give us no relief on, you know, what we're currently experiencing over time during that particular period.
The reason I bring it up is, you know, as I'm sure with other people in the council, people contact you out of the blue and I heard that there was a block of individuals hired years ago and that, are you in that block? And it was, it was a big number and there's a potential for a lot of, a lot of retiree, retirements. And like you said, ten months to hire people, that's a concern.
Right. We had thirty in my class, which was the biggest that was ever hired, and then subsequently within another eighteen months, they hired another thirty. So we have sixty people that are going to be eligible for retirement within probably the next eighteen months. Now, that's not saying that they're age-eligible, that's saying that they will have twenty years on. That's not saying that all of them are going to go at once, but it is going to say that those people, more people will have the availability to retire from the job and like I said, it does take a while to fill... it does take a while to fill those.
In your experience, do you, when the eligibility window is open, is it, 100% is never an answer, but is it typically taken?
Generally, not, actually. I mean, most people are hired, I would say the average person is hired around 27. We're currently the people who will be eligible to retire are still Tier One people, so they can retire after 20 years of service, so, but we can't retire until we're at least 50. So you still don't have the age to retire for the average person. Generally, the average person puts in between 23 and 27 years of service. So that window will be wide, but it will, but because there's so many people, it will, we've already seen from my class, I think, five people out of the 30, so, I mean, you're talking about, you know, a decent chunk, and then over the next few years, we expect there to be accelerated numbers of people retiring.
Chief, I'm not going to drag this out anymore, though, but if you could, if you could take a look at the ages and all the, I'm sure you have, and just, you didn't know I was going to ask this question.
We did, no.
But if you could take a look at that and just kind of give us an update, and then if we could have a feel, Mayor, for when you're going to start the hiring process, to understand that it takes 10 months, that would be great to have that update.
What I'll do is I'll compile the number of people total that we have, which is right, just over 200 right now, and tell you the number that are eligible to retire.
And thank you for that regular report that we get regarding the overtime, it's helpful.
Alderman Connolly.
Thank you, and actually, Chief, you actually answered most of what I was going to ask you, except just real quick to clarify, anyone you hire right now is a Tier Two pension rate, so we're looking at a statistically fairly big chunk of our Tier One staff at the Fire Department leaving within the next possibly 18 months to two years. I would be very concerned if we see our staffing drop any lower than it's been. Obviously, I forwarded you and the rest of the council and the mayor an email from a constituent of mine who had, you know, fairly traumatic fire at her home, and just her extreme appreciation, we talked to about, for the professionalism, for the prompt response time, the professionalism, not just from the staff that showed up the night of the fire, but the people who followed up afterwards, too. So again, I'd just like to publicly commend them. I would be very concerned, though, I mean, your reports, I appreciate getting that regular information, it is a little scary to see what kind of overtime we're looking at, and that's not including any potential injuries that may happen, anyone who may get called up for military duty, none of that's factored in, so I'd certainly hope that we're not waiting too long, considering, starting a class is still 10 months to any sort of relief for our staffing numbers. But then also, I just want to add, since Station Eight is one of the houses that we're talking about, I'd certainly like to be involved, if I could, with, if you meet with Alderman Donlin, looking at locations. I think we probably have a similar one in mind, but I want to make sure, because there are a couple of spots that have been talked about, and just kind of, just some of the feedback I'm getting from people in my ward on what they'd like to see.
Sure, yeah, forward those to me, and we'll be happy to, I would be surprised, quite frankly, that you're going to give us something we haven't already looked at, because there's really not a lot of areas that will accommodate what type of land needs that we need to build a fire station, but I, you know, if you're thinking the same thing that we've already looked at, that's a good thing. That means that everybody's on the same page, so.
I hope so. That'd be nice.
First time for everything.
Any other questions for the chief?
Thanks, Chief.
Is there any new business coming for the council?
Mayor.
Alderman Purchase.
I would just like to thank Director Brown for, I requested a tour at CWLP, and the tour was very informative, to see that we were going from eight filters to 12, and all the measures that's being put in place for us to make sure that we're resolving the issues with our water tasting and the smells, was very informative.
Great. Yeah, if any council members want a similar tour, just to reach out, Doug Brown.
The budget kickoff internally will be October 12th, and so that's for the next fiscal year, so those discussions will happen internally at that point in time. And then, as I mentioned, the Starbucks downtown at the Wyndham opened up, they had a ribbon cutting today, so they expanded their space, and it's good to see that expansion in downtown Springfield. Appreciate Caleb Ravens, executive director for DSI, being here, too.
We do have some individuals sign of us to speak, from Horace Mann, we have, I don't have a last name, unfortunately, Peter, regarding deferred comp. If you'd state your name for the council, we'd appreciate it.
Good evening, I'm Peter Moore, and I defer my time to Don here, I'll let him speak.
Great.
Good evening, Mayor Langfelder and city council members. My name is Don Carley, I'm a resident of Springfield and serve as the general counsel of Horace Mann. I'm here tonight as an executive of the company to express our disappointment and concerns related to the City of Springfield's 457B Deferred Compensation Plan and Record-Keeping Services. For the record, this relates to RFP number CS 2112. The fundamental purpose of this RFP was to select a single company to provide investment and record-keeping services to the City of Springfield employees. The plan allows employees to put away some of their retirement funds into a retirement account. Horace Mann is currently one of a handful of companies that are providing these services. Although Horace Mann has yet to receive an official notice from the city regarding the status of our RFP, we were provided with an email that was sent out in September 14th, advising us that the Deferred Compensation Committee had voted to select three companies to participate in the plan going forward. In short, the email stated that Horace Mann will be excluded from the city's plan once the committee's recommendations are ratified by the City of Springfield City Council. I wanted to talk with you about that tonight. Horace Mann provides exceptional retirement products and personalized services. Although the company offers a variety of products and services, no company has the availability or resources to support members of the city's deferred compensation plan as effectively as Horace Mann. We have tremendous financial strength with over $12 billion in assets, and the company is committed to providing plan participants, who are our Springfield friends and neighbors, with the full resources of the company. We are excited to have the opportunity to support the local community and to ensure eligible city employees can deserve a well-deserved retirement. Importantly, Horace Mann currently provides retirement services to over 4,500 public retirement plans around the country, so we have significant experience. Horace Mann respects customers' choice, but in light of the Deferred Compensation's Committee decision to select multiple providers of the plan, Horace Mann believes that the company is qualified to provide services, and would ask that we be given an opportunity to compete. While every company's products and services have strengths and weaknesses, we firmly believe that Horace Mann's product suite and services offers are the best in class. I want to stress that Horace Mann is the only local company being considered. Horace Mann was founded here in Springfield 75 years ago, we have approximately 1,000 employees based here in Springfield, which is our home office. Our commitment to this community is longstanding and significant. Our headquarters consists of 200,000 square feet and was constructed 50 years ago. Our commitment is reflected in the support we demonstrate through our senior leaders, who support the community and serving local charitable organizations and boards, as well as making significant charitable contributions to local organizations on both an individual and corporate basis. For those of you that don't know, Horace Mann's a publicly traded insurance and financial services company with more than $12 billion in assets. The company has a longstanding history in the retirement space, which date back to 1961. We believe we have a unique opportunity and ability to provide retirement planning services to the members of the city. No other company can compete with the level of personalized service that Horace Mann can provide, and no other company has made the level of commitment to support the City of Springfield over the past 75 years. Respectfully, I would ask the city council, when this matter comes up to your attention, to review the recommendations carefully and consider whether those recommendations to exclude Horace Mann from this plan is the best choice for the city and the members of the plan. I would like to thank everyone for your attention. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep, Alderman McMinim.
Thank you, Mr. Hurley, for coming tonight. I'm not sure if any of us know what this is about that are sitting here, us aldermen and alderwomen, but I do know that a year or two ago, there was an attempt to consolidate the IRC Deferred Comp 457, multiple plans that we have now down to one, and this council kind of rejected that approach, I think the mayor did, too, that it kind of happened without the knowledge of some people that should know about it. So have you, I don't understand how Horace Mann has been excluded from the process at this point in time, I didn't quite understand how that happened.
No, thank you for your question, if I may, I may bring one of my colleagues up if needed, but to answer that question directly, probably 16, 17 months ago, I think it was on July 23rd, we submitted an RFP. We have not officially heard any response. A letter, an email was sent out to a large member, a large number of the plan participants, and it was dated September 14th. That email advised those participants that the Deferred Compensation Committee had made a decision to select three of the five participants, and advised the participants that they can no longer provide, submit funds to Horace Mann, and that Horace Mann would be excluded.
So is Horace Mann now one of five that are participating?
Yes, sir.
And the workers' comp committee has tried to reduce that to just three participants?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's how it seems to me.
Mr., yes, I think the goal was to provide it to a single provider, and that's certainly something that Horace Mann respects. My understanding is the committee's recommendations are to lure to three, and our view is if we're going to limit it to three and not go to a sole provider, we would ask the city council to reject that recommendation and ensure any qualified company has the right to compete and serve its customers.
Yeah, I think three years ago, although we recognized that there's some economies of scale by having one provider, the issue was, people have existing relationships with their financial advisors that they like to deal with, and we didn't want to disrupt those personal relationships, those professional relationships with the existing financial providers, and I think that rationale still exists, that we don't want to force our employees to terminate relationships that they've had for maybe many years.
Yeah, matter of, you know, the general counsel for Horace Mann, as a matter of process, it's been unclear to me. We do procurement at Horace Mann, and we submit, we have 4,500 plans around the country. This process has been unique from our perspective, just we haven't heard anything officially, but emails are going out to the plan participants articulating what the decisions have been made, and my understanding is those recommendations have not come to this council, and the city council would be the ones that would ratify it. So we wanted to come here tonight to make sure we could shine some light on this issue and make sure the city council is aware of it. We're quite concerned about being excluded. I brought one of our agents, Katie, and a vice president of our life and retirement. We have, you know, 1,000 employees that stand ready to serve this community, and we want to make sure we have the ability to compete and not be excluded from the plan.
Yeah, were you interviewed? I mean, was Horace Mann interviewed in the process, in the RFP process?
We submitted the RFP, I know there were some follow-up questions. I'm not aware that we were part of.
No face-to-face interview?
If I may, Peter Moore is our vice president in the retirement space and has more details.
As to an interview, there had not been any notice of finalist or semifinalist, that's sometimes referred to as an interview, and that had not occurred. There was continued responses up through, I believe, early March into February, and subsequently then, as Mr. Carley indicated, we were, some of our participants were informed that we were no longer going to be a provider to them.
Alderman Connolly, then Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you, Mayor, and I guess what you said just kind of crystallizes my question. You're saying employees have been notified and are coming to you and saying that you're not going to be my provider anymore?
That is our understanding, yes.
Yeah, that seems problematic at best.
Yeah, we received a copy of an email, it was dated September 14th, that some of our customers and friends in the community sent to us, and it was sent out, it was sent to a BCC, so we don't know how many people got it, but a handful of individuals reached out to us to let them know they had gotten it, and it essentially articulated, you know, the deliberations and the decision of the committee, and said that, you know, when it's ratified by the city council, you'll no longer be able to invest, and obviously, that's raised a lot of customer concerns. At Horace Mann, it's raised concerns just about the process in general, it seems like. That email was sent ahead of coming before this body, and I'm sure you would have had, you know, thoughtful discussion and comments. From our perspective, you were deprived that opportunity, but it's already been sent out and created some challenges for us as a company.
I can imagine.
Chief.
Thank you.
Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been part of a lot of RFPs, there should be score sheets that we should be able to look at. I assume that because they were a local employee, they should, they would get, what is it, five points or whatever, whatever we do with that. I think it would be good to, you know, let them see the score sheets, I don't know, something's out of whack, I would think, whether it's fees or whatever, I don't know, you know, I don't know anything about how they, what their point systems were, but I think that they should, they should be able to see the score sheets and see where they're out of, you know, what knocked them out, but, you know, I hate, you know, anytime we have a local business that gets knocked out of this, and especially with Horace Mann, I was notified by one of your employees a couple of weeks ago, and I'm, you know, we're not involved in all that, so I was shocked when he told me, so, but I think we need to see the score sheets.
If you'd indulge me for a moment, there is a score sheet, and we have that similar process, I think, the alderman made a comment that's important, you know, your relationship with your financial advisor, think of somebody that's, as the chief just talked about, nearing retirement, thinking about their plans and that personal relationship that they have with the planner is an important one. Horace Mann, obviously, our model is to have a very, you know, one-on-one relationship, it's not a call center environment or over an email, so even when you think about cost, although our cost is competitive, we're not the low-cost provider. That's not our goal, our goal is to provide that human interaction, which we think has value, and for those customers that want somebody to answer their phone, we're there for them. We certainly, as a company, would have respected the city moving to a sole provider, but here where, at least the committee has indicated that they've selected three, I can assure this committee that our, you know, our products and pricing is competitive with that group.
Alderman DeSenzo, then Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for your awareness, we're not involved with the RFP process at all. Actually, I was involved with the RFP process for the first time in my four years sitting on this council, just in this past week, so just so you know, all we get is an ordinance that comes before us on what was chosen. We don't have any involvement in writing the RFP, distributing the RFP, grading the RFP, that's not our function. So just so you're aware of that, this is not a council issue.
No, no, I'm aware that you're not involved in the process, but I wanted to, and our company wanted to come before you to let you know, because that will be presented to you, it's already been sent out to the community before it came to you, but we wanted to come here today so that when you do sue it, you have some context and understand our concerns. here today so that when you do sue it, you have some context and understand our concerns.
Alderman Downland.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a comment. My understanding is the deferred comp program that we have presently in place, the city and the municipality contributes zero towards that program. It is entirely a decision of each of the employees, therefore, to Alderman McMenamin's comments earlier, I don't know why the individuals wouldn't have the ability to choose who their provider is, not unlike if they choose what bank or paycheck goes to, just a comment.
Yeah, that's a, the committee was restructured. I mean, the first go-around, it was restructured to have union representation of employees and other employees, and then, of course, Director McCarty and Director Cusin were on there. The committee, you know, vetted or did the RFP, so it's not really the cities, it's the employees. And so I did raise the points of concern with Director McCarty and Cusin earlier this week with regards to the results, because if you wanted to do one provider, go with one provider. And then so the other two selected, I think one was IPPFA, not a shock there, and then the other one was AXA. So that's what we'll have to, I asked Corporation Council just now, comes to the council, we reject it, does it go back to the original way it was? And so, you know, I come from banking, you know, so I'm familiar with this type of process with regards to that, you know, if a provider wants to, you know, save the employees money with basis points, and that's the reason we move this direction, then cut your basis points and everybody will come your direction, and then you'd have the service that you want or whatever. So, you know, I know my opinion would be just go back to the drawing board, just because the way it was, and it just, but I'll leave that up to the committee. Corporation Council will check if the council rejects it, does it go back to square one or do we pretty much don't have a say-so? So that's what we'll have to check.
Mr. Mayor, real briefly, if going from five providers down to three providers requires City Council action, and I am assuming it does--
I think so, yeah.
--then what are these emails going out there saying that we're going in a certain direction? Someone's jumped the gun here, and if you can show us how that happened, let us know, because this council has the final decision, and we don't want incorrect information going out there by a decision that has not yet been made.
Alderman, you're correct. I just want to clarify for the record that that notice did not go out from the city or any city officials or human resources. It actually was the union representatives on the committee that sent that out to their members, alerting them to the decision that the committee had made and was forwarding on to Corporation Council's office to come before the council for approval. So I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Well, check on that email, because if it says, if it doesn't say something like "subject to City Council approval," there's a problem with that email that that member of the committee is on, and that member of the committee ought to receive some--
Sanctions?
Some corrective--
Right.
Guidance.
Well, there are four, there are four union members representatives on the committee, and my understanding, I haven't seen the email, is that it was a unified email that went out from, from all of them to the union folks. I haven't seen it. I'm not in a union, so I don't know, but that's what happened.
Right. Thanks.
Alderman Conley.
Thank you. I was hoping Director McCarty would state this. We did get an email from him around 4:30 this afternoon, kind of going over a little more detail of this, and I apologize, I was off work and then coming here, so I didn't see that. I will say, and I do, I agree, Alderman McMenamin, members of the committee should not be putting news out like that ahead of council action. As a union person, as a union member, I do expect my union to keep me informed about changes that are going to impact me, and I will say the people I've heard from are only people who, who have their funds with you and who were, to be quite honest, upset about losing Horace Mann as an option. So, you know, I appreciate, I appreciate that, that sometime is what they, is what a union will do, is give their, give their people a heads up. This is the direction things are going in. So anyway, thank you for coming in tonight and giving a little more clarity to your position. I'm certainly going to look a little more closely at this as it, as it moves forward, but I appreciate you having the heads up to come in and talk to us also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, there's a discussion on that point?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Harvey Hall.
Not going to make it.
He couldn't make it.
Okay. Bill Basket.
My name is Bill Basket. I live on North Third Street. I am the president of the Lincoln Park Neighborhood Association. Mayor Langfelter, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, I wish to thank you for allowing me to speak. I am here to speak and express my concern about the pop-up parties which have been occurring over the past several years in the inner-city older neighborhoods, and more recently, the pop-up party which occurred on the four corners of North Grand Avenue and Fifth Street to include the parking lot of Quick and Easy this Sunday morning, October 2nd. This is not the first time a Springfield citizen expressed their concern to the mayor and the City Council in regards to pop-up parties in the older neighborhoods. This is not the first time a pop-up party has occurred at the four corners of this location this year. There was a pop-up party which occurred on July 3rd, 2021, in which the Quick and Easy sustained a significant amount of damage to the inside of the store because of individuals at this pop-up party. There is a pop-up party on September 13th and 20th, 2020, at the same corners of Fifth and North Grand. The incident on the 20th of 2020, the Quick and Easy was forced to shut down. On one of these occasions, I cannot remember exactly when, because there have been so many of these parties at this location, that state police and the Sangamon County Sheriff's Office was on the scene in which they had to ask, which they had asked Springfield Police if they needed assistance in maintaining order, and this help was turned down. There was also a pop-up party which occurred this summer in the parking lot where the Shop and Save used to be on North Grand Avenue. It was at this party where gunshots were fired and someone was shot. Springfield has contingency plans for natural disasters, chemical spills, and mob action. The Springfield Police Department does not have a contingency plan in place to address the pop-up parties which have been occurring over the last several years in the inner-city older neighborhoods. This is evident by eyewitness accounts at these parties, which have been filmed on video, showing that when the police officers are called to these pop-up parties, nothing is done to break up these parties until there are gunshots fired. There have been several occasions at these pop-up parties where people have been shot and who needed medical assistance. If the police department does in fact have a contingency plan in place for pop-up parties, I respectfully ask the Chief of Police, make this contingency plan available for public review for transparency. I cannot stress enough the significant danger to public safety and property because of these pop-up parties and a lack of law enforcement engagement with those who participate in this lawlessness, which creates mayhem in the neighborhoods. These parties also create a safety hazard for those possible innocent victims who may be involved in a car crash by a driver who is under the influence of alcohol or drugs leaving one of these pop-up parties. In closing, the residents of the inner-city older neighborhoods are extremely tired of hearing the excuse from city leaders, "There is nothing we can do." Thank you once again in allowing me to speak. Are there any questions?
I have a question for the mayor.
Chair, Alderman Purchase.
So seeing that we've had multiple pop-up parties on North Grand before I was even here, is there some type of plan in place for another one that may occur? I know that we're not able to see when it happens or when it's occurring.
Now, Chief Scarlett, or Assistant Chief Scarlett, speak to that. The challenge is addressing it before it happens. I mean, so if anybody hears or sees something on social media, that's how they communicate it, but the Assistant Chief can enlighten us, and he'll speak with regards to the police department, and this is very challenging. We've seen it during the pandemic. When you have hundreds of people, or I'm not sure how many are out there, probably hundreds, and you only have a few officers, the officer's safety is at stake, and so they do what they can to make sure the area is kept as safe as possible. So, but I let him speak to that, but we saw it play out with protests and everything else. So the pop-up parties is very challenging for the police department, but again, in order for us to address it once and for all, you need citizens' engagement, and there are citizens that speak up, young people speak up, and they let the police officers know, and that's how we've been able to take guns off the streets, we've been able to head off these pop-up parties at occasions, but it's still going on, and it just takes that citizens' engagement, working with the police department, and supporting one another in that effort. So Assistant Chief Scarlett.
Thanks, Mayor. I need to clarify a few things, and I mentioned this several weeks, probably months ago, and I'll say it again. The Springfield Police Department does not turn down the assistance of any other law enforcement agency in this town, whether that's the county sheriffs, whether that's the park police, Leland Grove, Jerome, state police. I've got an operations plan right here which involves a multi-jurisdictional response to these. We do not turn down anyone's assistance. I said that earlier, I'll make that very clear. I think that's an important piece right now. We addressed, to the gentleman's point, there were several pop-up parties, I think it was the 13th of September, the 20th, and maybe some other ones. We put together a multi-jurisdictional operations plan. The plan is right here. This is something I like to keep near and dear, because we don't like to share exactly what our operations are and how we go about business, so the public can, you know, that's not something that needs to be shared. So, but we do have a plan in place that we, that we've used at least four times since September of last year, to the mayor's point. We don't get the benefit of knowing when these, when these pop-up parties happen, that's why they call them pop-up parties. This plan right here, when we have intel, this involves about 20 to 25 personnel who come in on their off-time. We pay them. This costs thousands of dollars to the city for us to have plans in place when these pop-up parties occur. We need, to the mayor's point again, we need citizen support to say, "We're done with this." When we see something, you know, as soon as we can be notified, or we can get in there and do our best to absolutely shut this down. But it is manpower-intensive, it is dangerous, not only for the residents of the city, but to interject our men and women into those situations where there's, you know, hundreds and hundreds of people, and there's a balance there that we have to weigh.
Real quick to add on to that, the one thing we will be taking a look at is a camera system. We talked about LPRs here, but really for, once that occurred at the Quick and Easy, I think that's happened twice now for businesses, maybe forming a partnership where, I'm not sure the cost of those, but that's something we can take a look at and maybe sharing the cost associated with those.
Can I?
Sure.
I'm sorry, if I could just touch on one thing you brought up, a point, I apologize. Regarding Quick and Easy, I think it's important to point out, we do have a good working relationship with them. Our sergeant called them this past Sunday morning at 1:43 and said, "There's a large crowd gathering. Would you like me to disperse them?" He then called for six to seven additional officers, and in the course of 20 minutes, they were able to push those people off the parking lot. Quick and Easy is willing to turn out the lights and shut things down in an effort to try and persuade individuals hanging out to move on. So we do have a good partnership, a good working relationship with them.
Alderman Purchase.
I was just going to, well, he just said some of it just then, but in the, in my thoughts of the response, how many officers showed up at this time? Because I know just earlier, we were talking about how we have to have so many officers at these 3:00 AM bars. Are we having that same situation when we have pop-up parties?
Oh, 100%, and this was, so this incident that happened this past Sunday, it was actually a small event. There might have been 60 vehicles there. Our officers were made, observed it, made the phone call to Quick and Easy, had six to seven show up, which again is slightly less than half of the officers working for the city of Springfield at that time, and were able to push the vehicles out.
Now, Chief, is there any way that, I'm not for sure, if I'm incorrect, please correct me, but if it's on Quick and Easy parking lot or somewhere else like the Shop and Save, are we able to call tow trucks in to remove some of these cars and push them out if they don't want to move within 10 or 15 minutes because we're so short on manpower?
You've got to have certain agreements already in place as far as that goes. Any, any movement of vehicles from private property, however, is going to be up to the owner's responsibility to do that. What we have done and arrangements that we've made with business owners up at that area of Fourth and North Grand is there are owners that are willing to block off their parking lots, which is important, you know, to put something across the entryways so that cars can't get in there, and so we do have, again, partnerships with businesses up in that area and all throughout the city who would try and make suggestions like, "Hey, this is a way to keep your parking lot clear." Lighting, you know, there's cameras, there's all sorts of things that we encourage businesses to do as well.
Okay.
Any other discussion on that point? Alderman Gregory.
I do agree with, with one of the points that was made tonight. You know, we, I respect our police department, they're, they're working hard, short-staffed, and we as a community got to step up and call out these bad actors and, and, and really help them keep our community safe. We've been through some rough times together as a community, and we've gotten through them, and I think we need to put away all of whatever it is, and we really got to work together. There's some people listening to me and watching this meeting tonight, and I really want to just, just say it for me, in the news, you played something important that we really, really as a community have to, you know, I don't know if, you know, I got a 14-year-old son, and, and, you know, the other day, I sat down and talked to him about if he had a stinking gun. A good kid, but I want to know, and, and, and we have to start taking more proactive measures. I've talked to Chief about really trying to figure out where all these stinking guns is coming from in our, in our, in our community and trying to get down to that, and I agree with you, and I'm going to do all I can to really energize the community, to really call out these bad actors and really put pressure on them, that we don't want it in our communities. We want to have fun. Everybody's okay with having fun, but when we bring all these, these guns into play and people are getting shot, it's going to draw our attention. So anybody's listening to me, if you have a business, if you want to have fun, and if you pull these guns out, you're going to draw our attention, and we are going to act, so it just is what it is. You know, I don't want anybody to get it confused that, that, you know, any, anybody, me anyway, is not for law and order, because I'm very, very for law and order. I think I've shown that with some of the actions that we've taken in, in War II about pop-up parties and everything else. And we'll put out that same message again, that, you know, we'll do everything we can, we'll block off those stinking areas if we got to for a few weeks, but, and go after the corporations, we're having no problem. But, but I just wanted to put that out there, put that call out there, that, that we all need to really, really bond together and get this stuff handled.
Thank you for that. Any other comments? Alderman Williams.
I just want to thank the police, because it is challenging. I think my first, within my first month, I experienced a pop-up. I got a call in the middle of the night. Woman said to me, "Alderman Williams, I just got off my shift and I can't get home." And I said, "Well, what do you mean?" And she was describing these, well, she was saying 500 cars, you know. It was the Pillsbury pop-up, if you remember. So I told her, I said, "Well, call the police," and she said, "Well, I'm standing here with the police." And so what we ended up doing, she ended up parking somewhere by land fair, and then the police walked her off, you know, up to her, her house, but she really let me have it, telling me that it's a shame I can't get to my driveway when I get off my shift from work to go home, and even the police can't get me there. So, you know, I did the Alderman thing, "Well, I'm sorry, and we got to try to figure it out." But when I went out there, I was just amazed at, of all the violations, not just the noise violation, because everybody's music was blasting, the parking violations, noise violation, just all these code violations was going on, and I talked to a couple of officers, but I dare not say to them, "Go do something," because it was like 500 to one, you know, because now it might be 500 cars, but it's probably 1,000 or 2,000 kids or young people, I'll just say, young people. So I would never encourage the police to attempt, but, but my thought that night was to-- encourage the police to attempt. But, but my thought that night was to surround them with, I was being crazy, knew Alderman, you know, surround them with tow trucks, you know. And then, once we got them surrounded, we're going to tow them where, but, you know, Winslow quickly. No, that ain't happening, you know. So I think what the solution is, is not being discussed enough. I don't think we talk about what a solution is. I think we need some kind of a task force or subcommittee or something there where we put together a few neighborhood associations with the police, with a few Aldermen, maybe not all of us, but a few of us. And, and we really brainstorm this thing, whether we do research what happens in other cities when this happens, because I know it can be fixed. Now, I had a friend as an Alderman in another location that told me, "You got to offer award money." So you have to say to these kids on your own social media, you know, "Anybody knew about it, and you give us the, the information early enough, you get this many, you know, much money." And it tended to work for them, you know. So what I would say, I'm open to any kind of options and any kind of suggestions and discussion, because we can't just sit here and just say, "Well, we do what we can." And we do have the law enforcement contingency plan, but what about the community plan? What about the citizen plan, what we want to do? Because we know more than what we realize. We just don't talk to each other enough and share that information with each other to prevent these things. There's hints out there. There's things, now, they went to talking in code, you know, so I couldn't understand the Facebook and the Instagram, all that mess. But I still believe that if the people come together and we have meetings and we discuss these things, we can figure some of these things out. Whether it's, like I said, copy the others, you know, do this little reward thing maybe as an incentive. If you help us, you get this money, you know, and that prevents it. We prevented it one time. Well, we thought we prevented it, and I worked with Alderman Gregory and Chief Winslow and some of the police. We stopped it at Comer Cox, but they jumped on us and went to another location. So I know it's challenging. I, I really want the citizens to understand, we, we do want to fix it. We do want to try it. And you never know when it's going to just, out of nowhere, appear. But I appreciate you guys, because I know you take a hit for, it's like, okay, a few months go by, boom, we have another one. Boom. And then it's really, gets extreme when it happens in an area that never happened before. It just really freaks everybody out, that many cars at one time in that place. Sometimes, I think, we make mistakes. We've done it several times tonight. We talk about our manpower strength in the public. So the kids know, oh, it's only 16 officers on duty. Well, you know, I mean, I mean, I know we mean well, we're having a discussion about other things, but, Chief, sometimes I think that, that can hurt, you know, when they don't know. That's why I'm glad you didn't go into what your contingency, what the other law enforcement officers are. But I think we need to create some kind of body that works on this.
I'm sure Alderman Purchase will help.
Of course.
And Alderman Williams, and we'll have someone from the police and the ICAAN as well, and other neighborhood associations.
And I just wanted to say something to you tonight, because I receive dozens of calls. I live right down the street from Quick and Easy in Enos Park. So not only was I receiving calls from Enos Park, but I was in Lincoln Park. So I had to let everyone know that I am taking this very serious, but this doesn't just happen in 24 hours to fix the situation. And so Alderman Williams, I'm a lot younger, so I know that it takes like just 20 minutes when they're on Snapchat to send this over to you, because you don't, you don't understand how Snapchat works.
I don't.
That's what I said.
I don't understand the language they use.
But we talk to each other like that, so I'm not picking on him. But they do it in 20 minutes, so it's really hard for you to catch them. And some of the same people who have had these previous pop-up parties are now using other people's accounts or using a fake account.
But you did catch the guy that did one of them, didn't you? Didn't we?
That's correct. There's a couple of times we've identified organizers and held them responsible.
Group together.
If I could just say, I appreciate your, both of y'all's comments and the willingness to work together. I mean, I think that's what we need as a city, is to all be able to hands on deck for this problem. And I'll be the first to admit, I don't have all the answers. So getting a collaboration and group together to brainstorm is a good idea for sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wish to address the council? Is there a motion for adjournment?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.
Look, I ain't, look, I'm not. I came prepared. I put a jacket on. I was ready. I don't know why she calls us old all the time. She does that every minute. She can knock it off with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.